Always the case.
If you want mine once I'm done, I'm gonna go upstairs. I can work and monitor better up there than I can down here.
That's fine.
I seem to be.
Plus, you can be in the daylight light. All right.
Councilwoman Lawson Rowe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for sending me the your text messages over the weekend. I appreciated them. I we just had our public hearing a little bit earlier for it, so that's moving forward and real swimmingly. So I wanted to give you an update on on what we were talking about. Cost total for the three grants, 1.6 million. Only about 10% of that actually coming out of city coffers if we awarded. And we'll know at the end by the end of this year whether or not we'll get them or not. But no, you you absolutely nailed it in your picture. And certainly, both sides of the creek are going to get some love and some much needed TLC and really help open all that up. I was talking to the mayor earlier. It will be our miniature version of the Scioto Mile, if you can envision that.
I tell you what, I run and walk through there all the time, and I don't really pay any attention because it's all about getting my workout on. And so taking that walk, I could actually see what you had explained to council. So it was quite interesting.
Yeah.
So that's why I took the pictures and asked more questions.
Absolutely. And you got to go out. You said you walked five miles, so kudos to you. I wish I could get out there and walk that.
Come on and join me.
I know, I should.
Angie, we will have two guest speakers. And I have one written comment. So far, no one's in council chambers.
All right, we need music or something. It is just way too quiet. I'm sorry. It's just way too quiet. I'll get some music for next time.
I think the council members should be a choir. I think they should sing. I feel like that's more appropriate. Any takers? Anybody in church choir, drama club?
I'm sure. Strickland. Councilwoman Strickland has a microphone.
Yes.
Please do not get me started because I will go ahead and sing for you all. And you will just enjoy it. Yeah, so I I do love like karaoke and giving my own concerts and stuff like that, so.
I'm sorry, council, but you're not getting the packet on Friday. I know some of you did and some of you didn't. I'm not sure exactly what happened, but I take it everyone got it this morning in their email. Okay, good. We are waiting on council members Baker and Cottner.
President Jenkins, if you were speaking, no one could hear you.
You are unmuted, so. Madam President, Councilmember Baker has arrived. President Jenkins, I would suggest logging ending your feed and logging back in, seeing if that adjusted. A musical interlude while we wait.
Molly, one of my favorites.
Who's the name of the singer? I can't think of it.
Row Holden, Holden Back the Years.
Yeah, who's the singer, though? I can't think of his name.
It says Rick Braun. But I don't know if he was the one that made it popular.
Hey, we should do this before council every time plays the music. Lighten the mood.
Yeah, we talked about that, Councilmembers. Baker.
Okay.
There you go. Okay, I had to switch to a different device. Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is now 6:39. This is our Reynoldsburg City Council meeting, March 8, 2021. I am Council President Angie Jenkins. This meeting is being held virtually and livestreamed on the City of Reynoldsburg Government Facebook page. Molly, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cottner.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Present.
Councilmember Savadi.
Here.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
And President Jenkins.
Here. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda is approved as submitted. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. The approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of February 22, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to these minutes? Saying none, the minute stand approved as submitted. Next, we'll have community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. Citizens may bring matters to the attention of city council or discuss items on the agenda. The council president will invite speakers to be recognized and give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. Do we have any comments from the community in council chambers this evening?
No, Madam President.
Did you receive any comments from the community?
Yes, Madam President, I have one that I would like to read, and we have two guests. Ms. Carly Booz and Michael Wilkos. So we'll I'll introduce you to come on, and I'll after I read this email that was submitted to Councilmember Strickland. During the last, this is from A.B. Clayman, Building Welcoming Communities. During the last council meeting, there was discussion of the number of housing vouchers in Reynoldsburg. According to the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority in October 2020, there were 316 households with vouchers in Reynoldsburg. The number of vouchers was 12,787. Of those 316 vouchers, 82 had a disabled head of household and four had a veteran head of household. I hope this is the information you were looking for. The mayor had presented information as well. Please let me know if there's any further questions. Okay. Carly, why don't you go ahead and address council?
Great, thank you. And good evening, Councilwoman Jenkins and members of council. As you know, my name is Carly Booz, and I'm the Executive Director at the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. I'm here to thank you for proposing, considering, and hopefully adopting the Source of Income ordinance before you. This is a timely and reasonable measure that responds to a pressing in our community. And your leadership on this matter is a model to the rest of our region. As you may know, the alliance's membership is composed of specialists from across the housing spectrum, including both for-profit and nonprofit experts in housing, homelessness, community development, and community lending. Our landlord members own property across the nation with more than 10,000 rental homes in Franklin County alone, including in Reynoldsburg. This diversity of perspective ensures that our policy solutions and those that we champion are not designed to favor any specific industry or stakeholder, but rather are in the best interests of our community. That focus on residents' needs is what makes source of income protection so essential. Too many Reynoldsburg residents struggle to pay rent. In fact, the 43068 zip code is the 10th highest eviction source in the county, directly behind the Franklinton neighborhood on Columbus's west side. With Reynoldsburg's rapidly escalating housing prices, up nearly 13% last year alone, the number of households living on the brink will only grow. Those families and the 54,000 like them across the county are increasingly forced to lean on the social safety net to make ends meet. However, too many find that reaching out for that help comes with a devastating trade-off, being excluded from the communities in which they work, live, and worship because no local landlords will accept their payments. Communities like Reynoldsburg don't just close themselves off from new residents like this, but they become increasingly inhospitable to longtime neighbors who can't keep up with the rising costs or weather employment shocks like the COVID-19 pandemic. As we continue to grow and prosper, this risk of displacement will only become more acute. The Source of Income ordinance before us is a key to combating that, and it ensures that our people are protected and our city's growth remains equitable. I also want to commend the public engagement process you've hosted, which has really prioritized fact-finding and resource sharing. This allowed us to challenge the myths that surrounded the Housing Choice voucher program, some of which were rooted in pre-civil era, pre-apartment, pre-civil rights area stereotypes. And it also allowed us to avoid underestimating the skill and adaptability of our landlord community. Source of Income laws ensure that tenants who can afford to pay their rent are not excluded simply because of how they pay that rent. This isn't just good business sense or smart housing policy. It's about respect. Respecting the fact that people free from discrimination will make choices that are right for their families. And this ability to exercise choice makes us all stronger. It is therefore not only fitting that Reynoldsburg, the city of respect, joins nearly 100 other cities in America in adopting these protections. So once again, I want to thank you for your time and for all of your feedback and responsiveness to the comments that we've submitted. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, Mr. Wilkos, please make your presentation.
Great. Thank you, and good evening, City Council President Jenkins and members of Reynoldsburg City Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the ordinance to protect people from discrimination based on their source of income. My name is Michael Wilkos, and I'm Senior Vice President of United Way of Central Ohio. United Way supports approximately 100 Franklin County nonprofits who every day serve some of the most vulnerable residents of our community in meeting their basic needs and ensuring that children are successful in school. Source of Income protection will help our nonprofit sector be more successful. In order for nonprofits to be successful in their work, families must be stable in their housing. And this legislation will help improve the success of the nonprofit sector in our community by helping meet people to meet their full potential. We believe that this ordinance sponsored by Councilwoman Strickland is critical to the residents of Reynoldsburg. Many people have income from Social Security, child support, alimony, disability income, veterans programs, or governmental housing programs. This is an important protection that can help to expand the housing choices available to voucher holders, including in resource-rich neighborhoods where affordable housing options might otherwise be unavailable. There are over 400,000 people in Franklin County who currently live at 200% of the federal poverty level, or approximately $24,000 a year for a single adult. Thousands of people in central Ohio are denied access to safe, decent, and sanitary housing options annually. The housing discrimination with your source of income refers to the practice of refusing to rent to a housing applicant because of that person's lawful source of income. Often, the denial of housing will serve as a pretext for a prohibited form of discrimination, and this disproportionately affects renters of color, women, and persons with disabilities. As a result, source of income discrimination contributes to the perpetuation of racially segregated communities and neighborhoods with concentrated poverty. Children are often hurt the most by these types of discrimination. As an example, national research shows that children who grow up in concentrated poverty by age five are already one and a half years behind their middle-class children in their academic achievement. Most children will never catch up, putting them behind academically and economically for most of their lives. Housing stability solutions are the right thing to do to ensure that children are successful in school and contribute to building a strong future workforce. Everybody in central Ohio is having a hard time finding housing right now, but it's really a crisis for low-income people and those with. After a decade of chronic underbuilding and unprecedented population growth, central Ohio home prices and rents have been climbing considerably faster than incomes every single year for a decade. And lastly, source of income protections are good for the economy. Central Ohio continues to attract thousands of new jobs, and we are expected to grow by another 1 million people in the next 30 years, the same amount that we added in the past 30 years. We currently have a mismatch between where affordable housing is located and where job growth is occurring further out beyond the Beltway. This mismatch will continue to get worse without multiple housing solutions, including source of income legislation. We believe at United Way that we all play a part in creating a more just region for children and families. And we believe this legislation is the right thing to do for children and families who struggle. And we thank Reynoldsburg City Council for all of your work towards supporting this important housing justice work. And we look forward to its passage and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, do we have any other comments from the community?
No, Madam Chair.
Do we have any comments from council? Do we have any comments from Mayor Begany this evening?
Just a brief comment, Madam President. I wanted to, again, extend my warmest welcome to Officer Otis Merrill, who joined us today. He was sworn in earlier this afternoon at Reynoldsburg Police Department. In spite of the fact that he's a former Packer, played for the NFL, for the Green Bay Packers, and as you know, I'm a Bears fan, so I'm not exactly pleased by that. But I did learn a really good thing. He his alma mater is actually Illinois State, and that's where I spent some time when I was in Illinois. So the Redbirds, now we have a connection with that. So again, welcome Otis Merrill to the police department. Very happy to have you, and thank you again for all of your contributions and for the chief to extending this. I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Meredith Lawson-Roe for joining us earlier this afternoon at the swearing-in. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our communications. Do we have any other additional communications this evening?
No, Madam President.
Item seven on the agenda will be our motions. We have a motion to approve a resolution honoring Women's History Month. Councilmember Lawson-Roe will read the resolution. Thank you, Madam President. Before I read, I'd like to have a quick point of privilege, and it's just to share that it's an honor to bring forth this resolution as we all, both men and women, stand on the shoulders of the great women leaders before us yesterday and today. And so many of them obviously are named, but far too many are unnamed. And so while a path was clear for me and the rest of my women sisters, it is, I'm bringing it upon myself to not only sweep but to vacuum the path, not only for my daughter and granddaughter, but for everyone's daughters. Resolution honoring Women's History Month, March 2021. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every aspect of life of this nation by constituting a by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force for the country, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, as well as others, including the peace movement that encouraged a more fair and just society. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and the study of American history. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Reynoldsburg that this council does hereby recognize and declare the month of March 2021 as Women's History Month in the city of Reynoldsburg.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel?
Madam President, can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to thank Councilwoman Lawson-Roe for bringing this resolution forward. It is much appreciated for not just those I serve with here on council, but the mothers and the daughters and the aunts and the grandmothers of the world and in Reynoldsburg. So I just want to say thank you. And to be honest, there's a song I've been playing almost all day because I really like it. It's James Brown, which is, "It's a Man's World, But It Wouldn't Be Nothing Without a Woman or a Girl." So I think that is appropriate for today.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from counsel? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
I still move.
Councilwoman Meredith Lawson-Roe, may I have a second, please?
Second.
I'm not sure who said second. Councilwoman Bryant, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we'll have a motion to approve a resolution to recognize colorectal cancer awareness month. Councilmember Sabadi, please read this resolution.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the portion of the evening where the 52-year-old man, celebrating his one-year anniversary of his first colonoscopy, will read a resolution for the colorectal cancer awareness month. Whereas colorectal cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, but there is currently no cure. And whereas one in 20 men and one in 24 women will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer in their lifetimes. And whereas there are now more than 1 million survivors of colorectal cancer in the United States. And whereas the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is if 80% of the Americans age 50 and older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, half of the cases would be prevented entirely. And whereas it is critical that all people of all ages know the signs and symptoms of the disease. And whereas observing colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March could provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Reynoldsburg, we do hereby recognize March as colorectal cancer awareness month and encourage everyone age 50 or older to be screened.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on counsel? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
Nice motion. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Lou. You can make the motion.
No, I still move.
Thank you, Councilmember Sabadi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Baker, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we'll have item eight, which is our reports. Development Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. Trying to find the agenda. Okay. This is the Development Parks and Recreation Committee meeting with... Sorry, got some sort of feedback going on my earphone. With Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, Councilmember Packarel, and myself, and you, Madam President. The first item on the agenda is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a joint economic development district contract by and between Etinet Township and the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. Attorney Shook, would you like to speak on this, or Director Bausch?
Thank you, Councilmember Baker, and thank you, Council President Jenkins. This is an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of a contract for a joint economic development district with Etinet Township, known as JED 7. We have entered four previous joint economic development district agreements with Etinet Township. So you may be wondering why this is JED 7. I can tell you that JED 5 and JED 6 are currently... JED 7 is for a 52-acre parcel of land that is on Tollgate Road near 40. It is a build-to-suit development in Etinet Township. The city's share from revenue generated by JED would be 20% of the net revenue. That is the same as what the city receives for JED 1 and 2, and is an increase from what we receive from JED 3 and 4, where we only receive 15%. This is up for a first read this evening. It will be, we will be requesting that it be passed as a three-read emergency. The public hearing will be held the first meeting of April 3rd. And I'm available here if you have any questions.
Does anybody on the committee has any questions for Attorney Shook? Anyone on counsel? Okay. Well, seeing none, I've motioned that we move this ordinance for the counsel for his first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, this ordinance will be moved forward to counsel for his first reading. The second item on the agenda is an ordinance approving funds from the unincorporated general fund to an account in the Community Events Department. Ms. Clemmons, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Baker. This legislation is requesting that the financial donations received in 2020 for the Tomato Festival be transferred to the 2021 Community Events Budget. After the decision was made in 2020 to cancel the Tomato Festival, we reached out to the sponsors that we had received at that time, and they asked that we carry it over to sponsorship for the 2021 Tomato Festival.
Any question for Ms. Clemmons from the committee?
I've got just a simple one.
Councilmember Cotner.
Thank you. It says CT was going to be for the Thursday entertainment. I mean, so I'm assuming they paid that fee to be that. So will that carry to a specific, the same thing with them, or do they not care? They just want to make sure that their money goes toward the event? Or will they have, again, some kind of still title sponsored to that night's entertainment? Again, just kind of curious, I'm sure they're not having a real problem with it, but just wondering how we're treating them, obviously, and making sure that that's, you know, they're getting the same value.
Absolutely. Typically, what was in that sponsorship packet for that Thursday night entertainment is usually a banner that's on the front of the stage on Thursday night that recognizes them as the entertainments. It'll be used for that, money will be used for that, there's entertainment, and also some strolling entertainment throughout the festival that evening as well.
Okay, thanks. Like I said, wasn't a big deal, I was just kind of curious, make sure that they're still getting their same value there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else in the committee or counsel? Okay, well, seeing none, I make the motion that we move this forward to counsel for his first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Packarel. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Seeing none, this ordinance will be forward to counsel for his first reading. And seeing that there is no further business in front of the Development Parks and Recreation Committee, Madam President, I give you back the microphone.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our next report, which is from Public Safety, Law, and Courts Committee, Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Well, no, I take that back, that would be Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Safety, Law, and Courts Committee meeting for March 8, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, Councilmember Packarel, and President Jenkins. First on the item, or the only item, is an ordinance to amend Chapter 503 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg to provide fair housing opportunities for individuals and their families, regardless of the source of income to pay for such accommodations. First reading was February 22. This ordinance has returned to committee to be amended. Attorney Shook?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Bryant, and thank you, Council President Jenkins. This, there is a, we are going to be requesting that counsel consider an amendment to this ordinance this evening at the request of Councilmember Strickland and in consultation with Attorney Carly Booz, who spoke here earlier this evening. There has been additional language added under Section 503.07, subsection H. I'm going to go ahead and read that language because it's relatively short. It states, quote, "If a residential landlord requires that a prospective tenant or current tenant have a certain threshold of income, any source of income in the form of a rent voucher or subsidy must be subtracted from the total of the monthly rent prior to calculating if the income criteria have been met." The purpose of this additional language is to ensure that landlords are not able to discriminate against individuals who receive such subsidies by discounting the fact that they are paying their rent with that subsidy. And that is at the request of Councilmember Strickland, and I want to thank Attorney Carly Booz for suggestion of language on that.
All right, thank you, counselor. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this item? From counsel? Councilmember Cotner?
Thank you. I, you know, I don't so much have any questions, and I mean, it's clear that this is, you know, fast-moving through. I shouldn't say that, not fast-moving through, we've definitely spent time and given fair opportunity. So that's not the right way to say that, so I apologize. But, you know, I still think that this, you know, forcing landlords, forcing businesses into going through programs and requiring how they collect their fees, I still think is an overreach on the part of counsel. I think the use of vouchers is a great program. I've worked with Columbus Metropolitan, not any challenges that have been, you know, too cumbersome to overcome. I just, I guess that I think it's inappropriate that counsel is telling businesses how they can collect. We've got the discrimination protections from the federal level all the way down to the city level. So I just, I don't love the fact that we're moving forward of telling businesses how they're supposed to operate. So that continues to be my concern. The fact that, you know, really, the only negative we heard was from the attorney H, who said his opposition from the apartment complexes that he would represent was entering into a third-party contract, which is what this requires. You know, they haven't come back to beat down our doors. You know, now that may happen once this is passed, I don't know. But that continues to be the problem for me, is that we, you know, are telling landlords to enter into a third-party contract with a government agency and put those extra stipulations on them as owners. So that's the part that troubles me with this. Again, I just wanted to share my opinion in that of the handful who have reached out. And, yeah, I appreciate that. So thank you, Councilmember Bryant and others.
Thank you, Mr. Cotner. Do we have any further discussion from counsel?
Councilmember Bryant, if I may say a couple of words, please?
Please.
First of all, I would like to thank Michael Wilcox, Amy Clement, and also Carly Booz, who have put a lot of work into this legislation to making sure that we are in compliance when it comes to not breaking really, you know, any laws. Also, one of the reasons why I brought this legislation forward was really to aim to protect people who need the access to equitable housing. So I am going to urge my fellow councilmembers to move this ordinance forward. As we have already mentioned before, Bexley, Westerville, and now Columbus is also talking about the source of income. Or Columbus is actually, I believe, have a vote on it this evening. So I am urging the city of respect to make sure that we are moving forward as we continue to grow. We also have to make sure that those that may need a little assistance also have a voice here at city council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. Anyone else? Okay.
I did notice that Carly had mentioned that Columbus passed it about five minutes ago.
Okay. Thank you, President Jenkins. I move that we amend this ordinance to the new language proposed, as included in tonight's council packet. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Packarel. All in favor of amending this ordinance?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I now need a motion to move forward this ordinance to counsel as amended for a second reading.
Second. Oh, I offer the motion to move it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Packarel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to counsel for a second reading. As there's no further business before the Public Safety, Law, and Courts, I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Item E under Reports would be Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the... Thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for March the eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cutner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Pacarrel, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing the appropriations of additional salary funding for overtime for the Streets Department and declaring an emergency. Director Dorman?
Is requesting? Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Director Dorman is requesting a single read and emergency approval for this ordinance. Um, Director Dorman, would you like to speak regarding this legislation?
Sure, sure. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Strickland. Uh, the, the reason for this appropriation, obviously, is, as everyone knows, we had a fairly normal winter in Ohio. Um, our overtime budget for this year, which was around, I think, twenty-eight thousand dollars, has been pretty much depleted. I think we're around uh, twenty-six thousand dollars in overtime spent um, for snow removal this year. And that is after most of our employees will build up a comp balance um, to the maximum threshold allowed by the city. After that, everything is either paid out as overtime. Um, so we've reached that point, and obviously, knowing that we have some other festivities this year still to come, as well as another round of winter uh, late this year through potentially October, November, and December, we just need to add money to that fund um, to cover any kind of expense.
Thank you, Director Dorman. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation?
I'd like to say, um, Chair Strickland, um, I'm in support, and that, what was it, Friday was Employee Appreciation Day? And many, many of us had an opportunity to meet um, those gentlemen that work so hard in keeping our streets cleaned and paved and snow removal. Um, so they're the real heroes here, so I fully support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson Row. Are there any other questions from council? I move before this ordinance to council as a single-read emergency measure. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a single-read emergency. Item number two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the project grant loan agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for the East Main Street Roadway Improvement Phase Two. Director Dorman?
Yes, so this is, I, we've talked about this, I know, in the past on several different levels, so the city applied for funding which council authorized last year, and we were fortunate enough to receive another grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission for Phase Two of Main Street. Just to let everyone know, we actually opened bids on the first phase of Main Street this past Friday. Um, the bids were within the engineer's estimates. Um, it was slightly over, but within the ten percent tolerance. Um, so we are going to be going to council pretty soon about that as well, but this is Phase Two, and Phase Two is pretty much the same kind of concept we've been talking about. It won't be as heavy on the streetscaping because of the vernacular of the street there. We have a lot of the businesses, they sit back a little further from the street, they're not like the historic area. Um, but this will be from Jackson Street to Palmer and Graham. Um, and we have been awarded that grant through OPWC, so this would be to engage the city engineer into the design portion of that work.
Thank you, Director Dorman. Are there any questions or comments from the, from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any other further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number three, an order authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT to conduct surveying, design engineering, and bid service for the improvements to East Main Street, Jackson Street to Wagner Graham Road, and appropriating funds therefore. Director Dorman?
Um, I'm sorry, this, which one, I'm sorry, can you repeat that one?
Yes, so this one is having to do with the East Main Street, be it for Jackson Street to Wagner Graham Road.
Okay, my apology, I, I think I confused the other two. I think the other proposal we were talking about was for the inspection work for EMHT, and I apologize. The one we just talked about was for them to inspect the project that we've just awarded. This one would be for the design services. My apologies.
Mr. Dorman, the previ- the previous ordinance was to accept the grant, for council to accept the grant from OPWC.
Okay, I'm sorry, thanks Molly, okay. Gotcha, that's correct, because we're doing some cleanup, that's right. So essentially, yes, the, so the first one we read was to accept the funds that we received from OPWC. This one is to then engage EMHT to, to do the design work. Thank you, Molly, appreciate, please, appreciate you clearing that up.
All right. Is there any other questions from um, count, I'm sorry, from the committee? From council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacarrel. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with EMHT to conduct closed-circuit television CCTV data collection and analysis for the city's twenty-twenty-one sanitary sewer maintenance and repairing program. Director Dorman?
Yes, so this is a contract that we enter into typically with EMHT annually. Um, it is based on a director's findings and orders from the EPA uh, that was entered into probably around eight years ago. Um, every year, the city has to do annual inspections of our sanitary sewer system um, to basically show that it's functioning in the right capacity. Um, this was a direct kind of order that was issued originally to larger uh, treatment, it's treatment centers like the city of Columbus. And then after Columbus received theirs, then it followed, it trickled down to all the satellite communities. So since we send all of our district to Columbus, we're part of that general order. Um, this is uh, for an area, I think, attached um, to the ordinance should have been an exhibit as well, which would show the area, there's a map on there, I believe, as well. Um, and once again, once we do this work, then that'll provide us kind of a, a framework for next year's uh, lining project and manhole rehabilitation. If you're not familiar, this year, we're going to be focusing on the Prior Cliff area. Um, last year, after some of the flooding we had, we kind of moved our schedule around a little bit to focus on that area. We did uh, extensive uh, camera work in that area. Um, didn't find a huge amount of issues, but the ones that we did find are, our goal is to address those later this year, so.
Thank you.
And this is EMHT, EMHT does have their own crews, this is not something we subcontract out, so they actually have their own um, camera truck that they will bring out, and then they will do all this work in-house.
Thank you, Director Dorman. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting to you, President Jenkins.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Finance and Administration Committee, Councilmember Savadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. Uh, this is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. Uh, there's only one item on the agenda, and it's an ordinance to increase the training appointment period of the tax administrator to ten weeks and declaring an emergency. Uh, first reading was two twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, this ordinance was brought back to committee to uh, finish any discussion um, on this uh, item. Uh, utter sussec, do you have anything to add, or do you want to just wait for questions?
President Jenkins and Chairman Savadi, after the last meeting, I forwarded council a communication from Joni Crawford that explained the reason for the extra two weeks. Since that last communication, we've got a new JED and two more on the way. And one of the things that I don't think anybody really understands about the new JEDs is that they're getting broken down into parcels. The city doesn't collect tax by parcel, they do it by the whole entire JED area. So a good explanation would be trying to collect tax in the four wards that's different, and then asking for information from a group when they don't owe the tax to Reynoldsburg, they owe the tax to a different entity, so we don't have legal standing to ask the questions. Now, last year, we had a meeting where Brenda Browning was able to come up with a plan with si- uh, Attorney Shook and the people out in that township, in which we put the responsibility of getting the details for the individual partners um, from the companies themselves. And the reasons that they went to the different parcels is because the school district out there started flexing their muscle and holding back any abatements that they were going to give to allow development to happen. Now, with these three additional JEDs, cross-training all the jobs in my department, I'm not asking for additional appropriation, it was budgeted. I'm just asking for two extra weeks to get to replace someone that's been on the job for thirty years, thirty-plus years.
Um, so are there any uh, questions or comments for the auditor or for anyone uh, at this time? All right, seeing none, looks like you cleared it all up.
Thank you.
Uh, anything from council? My apologies.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to Joni for sending out that information.
Agreed. All right, well, then I'll move, uh, we forward this ordinance to council for its second reading. Do I have a second? Is that a second from Councilman Baker?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So uh, any last-minute discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its second reading, and that concludes the business for the Finance and Administration Committee. So I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, number nine, is consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items nine A through C are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency adoption. Unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion, council will move forward with the vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read items nine A through C?
A, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the twenty-twenty-one fireworks display, waive competitive bidding and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance authorizing the appropriation of additional salary funding for overtime for the Streets Department and declaring an emergency. C, an ordinance to approve payment of services performed in the prior year for the Development Department and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances?
I'm moved.
Councilmember Savadi, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Councilmember Bryant, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cutner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacarrel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Madam President, that was seven zero.
These ordinances are approved, seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Item ten, consent agenda for first reading. Items ten A through C through E, I'm sorry, are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward for a first reading. Would the clerk please read items A, ta- items ten A through E?
A, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a joint economic development district contract by and between a township in the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance appropriating funds from the unappropriated general fund to the account in the Community Develop- Events Department. C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the project grant loan agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for the East Main Street Roadway Improvement Phase Two. D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT to conduct surveying, design engineering, and bid services for improvements to East Main Street, Jackson Street to Wagner Graham Road, and appropriating funds therefore. E, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with EMHT to conduct closed-circuit television CCTV data collection and analysis for the city's twenty-twenty-one sanitary sewer maintenance and repair program.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Item eleven on the agenda is the consent agenda for a second reading. Items eleven A through E are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward for a second reading. Would the clerk please read items eleven? A through E?
A, an ordinance to amend Chapter five oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg to provide fair housing opportunities for individuals and their families regardless of the source of income to pay for such accommodations. B, an ordinance creating Chapter thirteen ninety-seven rental property registration to the Reynoldsburg Code of Ordinances to provide for the registration of residential rental housing located within the boundaries of the city of Reynoldsburg. C, an ordinance to amend Chapter one sixty, section one six oh point oh two F, Police Department of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. And D, an ordinance appropriating unencumbered balances as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, in various police special revenue funds, and providing that revenue for funds received during twenty-twenty be accepted. And E, an ordinance to increase training appointment period of the tax commissioner to a tax administrator to ten weeks and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. These ordinances stand for a second reading. Item twelve, consent agenda for a third reading. Item twelve A is part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove it for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on this ordinance. Would the clerk please read item twelve A?
An ordinance to waive the provisions of section nine seven one point one six of the city of Reynoldsburg codified ordinances for twenty-twenty-one for various Reynoldsburg parks and recreation events.
May I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Uh, motion.
Councilmember Baker, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who said second?
Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryant? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cut- oh.
A question first.
Oh, go ahead. Councilmember Cutner?
Um, this, at one point, uh, when we did talk about this in committee, uh, there was the discussion that this could include inside the Livingston House. The, the ordinance doesn't say anything about- about inside locations. It says the locations where this will be happening is in fenced areas. But would this include inside either Livingston House or inside the senior center or inside any of the buildings, or is this strictly outdoor?
Thank you, President, I'm sorry, Councilman Cotner. We have decided that we will not have any alcohol inside the Livingston House. And right now, we're looking at that event as not having any alcohol at all that we would hold there.
Okay. Still in the ordinance, though, that it would be approved to have it there.
If it was outside, but the event that we're going to have there, the artists and makers' market, we probably won't have alcohol there.
But we're, but we are approving it, though. I mean, this legislation still approves that you could at that event.
Correct. If you'd like to have it removed, we could have it removed.
No, I, the only part that I'm apprehensive is inside the buildings. So, if we're outside, it doesn't concern me the same way it did before. So, that's, that's the part that I just wanted to clarify, was making sure of that detail. So, I, again, if it's in there, it's in there as long as we're talking again outdoors. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the clarification. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant.
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorrel.
Aye.
And Councilmember Lawson Row.
Aye.
Madam President, that was seven zero.
This ordinance is approved with seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Item fifteen on our agenda is other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that you would like to discuss this evening?
I have something to say. Madam President, well, three things. One, thank you to all the essential workers. Two, Director Dorman, I had sent you an email regarding a part of Taylor Road. I didn't know if you received it or not. Well, okay, it might not be one. And three, I just wanted to congratulate the Reynoldsburg men and women's basketball. They came up short, but they still had a tremendous season, and it just sets the bar higher for next year. So, I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Do we have any other council matters to discuss this evening?
So, yeah, I have a couple things. So, thank you, President Jenkins and the council. So, I want to thank Meredith Liston Row, Councilmember Meredith Liston Row for bringing the resolution for International Women's Day. In, to recognize this month, we had a Butternies Women Leadership Program here in Reynoldsburg. So, we just did the graduation on March third. So, there are thirteen women graduated from that program. So, we'll continue the next program from the month of May. Again, that will continue to be going. So, this is, this started with this International Women Month on the March. So, that is just the beginning, and hopefully, we'll be getting more participation from all people in our communities for different things. So, that is, I just wanted to, I didn't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? If there's no other further comments, our next upcoming meetings, that there will be council and BZBA and Planning Commission meetings. Council anticipates that we will continue virtual meetings through at least the month of March. Our next council meeting is scheduled for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM. And unless there's no other further business, this meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry, do we have something?
Yeah, I have a question here about this. This question I wrote, but I forget to ask it before. So, how we are planning for having a physical meeting, just because I'm just throwing it out, because I wrote this question here. You say like the next one will be virtual, then April will be having a physical one. I still were thinking, I did not decide what is, what is, was there.
I don't, as far, I haven't been here for the last couple of meetings, but we haven't discussed that as of yet. I think it's a discussion that we need to have. I guess everyone can voice their opinion now, or we can wait until our next meeting just to see. Yes, Mayor Begany?
Just wanted to remind members of council, if you had not had a chance to be in City Hall recently, in council chambers, you have the dividers that are in place by all of the computer screens for each station, as well as an air purifier in system, in addition to the cameras that are present. So, council chambers are ready. The only concern that I think maybe is not necessarily the members of council that are there, but whether or not the public has the opportunity to attend under the guidelines of some of the numbers that are out there. But that's completely up to council, but we're doing what we can here at City Hall to make it as safe as possible for everyone.
Personally, for me, I would like to have this physical in-person meeting. I like, that's what I want, but it's all everybody thinks. So, that's all I want to say.
Do we have any other restrictions? I don't know if Governor Dewine has spoken about social distancing or made any changes. I know he is supposed to discuss this soon with everyone being able to have the vaccine available by April or May, I believe. Maybe it's May. But I haven't heard anything yet, but we can certainly discuss it and make a decision by our next meeting if we want to meet in April in person.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? I know that I heard today that the fifty and older group is this Thursday, I believe, for the vaccine. So, I think there are more and more people that have that ability to get the vaccine if they're interested in getting it. So, it looks like things are moving rather quickly with being able to get the vaccine. So, that's a good thing.
It's for those who are fifty and older and those who have type two diabetes. And there was one more, but I can't remember that. It's supposed to start this Thursday.
Right. So, it looks like things are moving rather quickly with the ability to get the vaccine. So, that's a good thing. So, if we don't have any other further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is seven thirty-nine. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Good night. Good night. Bye-bye.